And let's get back to our larger group. I know we could spend a whole lot more time talking about key findings and recommendations. I assure you, this won't be the last time we talk about it. But if there's anything that you all want to share that illuminated with you, that you'd like to refute or confirm some previous thinking that you had, that now you have data to back it up? We'd love to hear from a couple of you if you'd like to share.
Well, I'll go first. I'd say, and I think somebody already requested that we were able to get the full document where we can really look at it and view it to try to get those pieces. Because the screen and the slide is pretty hard to kind of go back and look. The confirmation, I'll just speak for myself, I don't think I'd be saying anything out of turn for anybody here. No surprises. There's just no surprises. We know this stuff. So I'm very interested. Now we've got this highlighting it to come up with those targeted goals, interim goals, et cetera, strategies to affect that. I wouldn't say under illuminate. I don't know that it's really something that I might see differently, but I didn't see reflected. I'm curious about is looking at the different, is it race? Is it socioeconomic? I think it's a combination. And so when there's, the data sets are stratified to race only. I'm thinking, well, what about low socioeconomic, white, black, Hispanic? What does that look like? Is there additional pieces in there? So those are the kind of things that I'm interested in looking at a little bit further. Because I definitely think it's a combination of both. What I've always said since I've gotten on this board is socioeconomic is everything. And yes, different cultural perspectives absolutely add into that. That's why I say it's a combination. But poverty is such a deterrent for achievement in life and education. By zip codes, a lot of that is tied to race. In certain areas, if there's white, low socioeconomic, I don't know. I'm thinking the numbers are pretty similar, maybe a little bit better, maybe not, because I don't know. So those are the things that I kind of like to dive into a little bit more to truly understand our community.
What I will say is about the data about our report, this is actually all on our portal, Hanover's portal. And so Dr. Goodboss and I can talk and visit about giving you all access to that, where you can filter by whatever filter you want. There are lots of ways to filter the data. We just asked them to kind of elevate just key findings and recommendations today, but there's lots of data for you too. Lots of it. Yes, sir.
Yeah, to figure back on what Brash was saying, Jersey. For instance, one of the findings was that Avid was very effective at helping our students achieve equitably on our benchmarks and CAs. But unfortunately, on the SAT, PSAT, and AP exams, they way underperform. And we know that's an act, we know that's an accurate issue because, you know, some students get to take private tutoring for the SAT or whatever, and other students don't have access to that. So that just again reiterates that. And, you know, we need to maybe provide opportunities for those students to get the tutoring they need to perform as well as those other students in close enough gaps.
I guess my greatest illumination came from the key findings. Most students' parents and staff feel that the adults at school understand, respect, and value students regardless of their background.
We're not even there.
Oh, I thought that we were looking at the whole thing. Well, then I was excited.
Yes, that's next. That's next. That's really about the audit.
I was excited about that.
But you're right. You're right about that. We were too. Anything else from the equity audit, just from the key findings and recommendations that we had a chance to look at so far?
Well, I will add and not repeat, because I would say that confirming are things that in our minds we already knew. And one of the things that I thought would be interesting in getting out of this is how much of the things that we feel in our mind lines up with any of the data once we actually deep in as being accurate or not. One thing that kind of illuminated to me was the part under the recommendation that talks about white and Hispanic students. And with Hispanic students not having an issue with absenteeism, so that says that they're still there in the classroom and at school as they're white counterparts, but they're still not achieving at the same rate. So to me, that eliminates that there's something else there that if we take a deeper dive, that we might need to know what is causing the difference? If they're both in the same classroom? And will that expose another thing that I think a lot of us know is true is different environments, you get different results. So of course, we can't put everybody at the same economic level, but what can we do as a school district to make that classroom as equitable as possible? So that's what illuminated to me.
Thank you. All right, we're going to keep moving. David, are you still the one?
Yeah, and that was a great transition, although I'm going to say one quick thing about the scorecard. And, you know, I find myself leaning in to hear everybody, even though I have headphones on, just human nature. You know, it's funny. But it's really important to consider that that scorecard is very foundational, right? And it's where you move from. And one of the tools, I think, goes exactly to what was mentioned in that, you know, you say, when in the state calculations, it can become very convoluted, where students count for different percentages and points. And, you know, they double up because maybe they fall under multiple categories and things. And so that kind of, okay, what's the root cause can become muddled. With that scorecard, you can actually, again, say, all right, well, here's an issue. Now let me look at it. And then you can break it out by race or by economically disadvantaged or not, or by other factors, and start to see where these groups that maybe in the state reporting is kind of, they're all grouped together, but you can start to separate them out and start to see where these different aspects really have, you know, larger impacts. So it is a tool designed to really kind of go deep into that data and then start to move forward from there. So specifically then with the equity survey, it is a very involved survey that covers perceptions within the district, different perceptions from outside the districts and within groups. So, you know, where do we think similarly? Where do we, maybe we think separately? And then what are the priorities, especially in relationship to equity? And we break it out into different categories and then we report that out. And similar to the scorecard, there's a lot of data in that dashboard that you all can have access to through the Hanover portal. We're only going to look at a couple of key indicators. But I think the key things that we pulled out for tonight's presentation really show that there's a lot of opportunity, you know, in Arlington, because there is a lot of positivity and there's a lot of opportunity for people to get together, to join and to move forward together. So when you look at it, you had about 11,000 totals, parents, staff, and students participate in the survey. I'm sure, I don't know exactly how the room is laid out, but I'm sure you can't really see this on the screen. But hopefully you have the hand out there that you can look at. But the key takeaway from this slide, and I won't even take a lot of time talking about it, is you see very positive numbers. And even when you get down to the lower numbers, you're still on the positive side when it comes to, hey, this is a priority for us. This is work that needs to be done. We do want our students, whether you're a teacher or a student or a parent, to have more opportunities to work together, to have more opportunities to experience other people's perceptions and values and cultures and perspectives and everything else. And that by and large, the district is working hard already to ensure that those types of things are being done. And, you know, the scorecard tells you that there is that where focus needs to be and where your strategic plan needs to address. But again, you know, there are a lot of positives here that come from the survey. So then overall agreement with statements about overall support for people from diverse backgrounds. So when we look at that overall, you know, my school supports my child's school supports the district's school support, depending on your role in the district. You know, that you do place value on culture and different cultures. You do place value on race, ethnicity, disability, status, religion. These are priorities. You know, gender identities is at the bottom when it comes to that. And I think the survey and even some of the open ended comments express some concerns there. But overall, right, I think there's a sense that the leadership has the right focus moving forward. So then key findings, and there are a lot of key findings, and I'll highlight these. Feel free to jump in and ask me any questions about them as we go. But participants indicate that IASC and schools are generally supportive of students, staff, and families from all backgrounds. They do favor collaboration. And parents and staff want the district to prioritize creating a welcoming and inclusive environment. That this equity work is important to them. Parents, students, and staff indicate that equity-focused discussions, lessons, class activities do not often occur on a weekly basis. So there are opportunities, and I think you're addressing that through your strategic planning. And then as that filters down into your, you know, objectives and key performance indicators, that's where those types of things will be put in place. And, you know, generally, students indicate equity-centered instruction is just occasionally. They generally do feel supported by their teachers, which is very important. So there are opportunities to address those things. But again, you know, there's good relationships there. Teachers feel that the district does not necessarily provide enough quality professional development or implement sufficient practices that promote equity across the district. So again, it's important then that we're doing this research. We're having the focus groups with staff and leaders that we did the survey, that we're looking at all of these things and making sure that everyone in the district has a voice. And I know there's a lot of work in addition to what we're doing with you all that the district is doing to ensure that there's a lot of different voices and a lot of different avenues for people to share and to express their opinion. Overall, most participants indicate that student-to-student relationships are positive, which is great to see. And parents and staff agree the district welcomes, values, and encourages parents to support students' academic growth. And again, that's also nice. As a former principal, you know, it's great when it feels like a partnership. And of course, I know that that's not necessarily always the case, but, you know, there are certainly a lot of positives here. And then most parents, students, and staff members agree that AIC clearly and effectively communicates rules and consequences to their students. And of course, that's a very important aspect, especially as you move forward, not only with the planning, but with the equity work as well. So then recommendations is again, expand equity-focused professional development offerings to ensure teachers feel competent, to ensure that, you know, practices are aligned. And again, that you're involving all, all teachers, all staff, all students, the entire community, you know, in these efforts. Increase instructional activities and involve student collaboration and perspective taking to foster respectful relationships among students from diverse backgrounds. And especially that collaboration is so important. And then increase support for students, staffs, and families that express diverse gender identities and sexual orientations.
So again, with the survey findings and some of the recommendations that we've reviewed, I would encourage you all to follow that same framework in a turn and talk about three or four minutes, and then we can go ahead and share out again. I would anticipate that this might have a couple more illuminates or even some refutes in a positive way based on some of the findings that we've identified. But again, illuminate, refute, and confirm if we can use the reflection time in the turn and talk to think about the findings through those three points and come back together. And certainly, if there are any particular areas before we engage in those conversations in the turn and talk, we can definitely go back and talk through some of those in greater specificity, if that would be helpful.
We all have three to four minutes.
I wanted to.
I can see that. Most of the surveys. Oh, I think they. Student to student relationships. Then why refuse this?
Okay, one minute.
So where's that safe space to discuss it?
Okay, well, I could wrap up your thoughts and come back to our larger group. And we can share out a little bit and ask any questions that you might have. So who'd like to share anything that illuminated, that you'd like to refute or confirmed your suspicion? Anybody want to share out with the larger group? Any questions?
I will share, confirm.
Okay.
Just one of the key findings, that student-to-student relationships are positive. I would agree with that. I think our students probably tunnel out things differently maybe than adults or the community as a whole. So that was confirming to me. Refute, this is our space to discuss. That second bullet under key findings, most students' parents, the staff feel that adults at school understand, respect, and value students regardless of their background. That still has a big question mark to me.
I just want to add on to that, or?
I just have a question. Okay, the first bullet, many teachers feel that the district does not provide enough quality professional development. Does many mean most? What exactly does that mean?
David, can you speak to that?
It might not have heard me. I'm sorry.
No, I've got the dashboard pulled up. It'll take me a second to find that, the specific data in there. And if I don't find it before I move on, I'll make sure that I send that over and then they can share that out with you, the specific number. Again, we pulled out kind of just the main topics. I deleted all of the very specific data that came within the report. But I'll find that specific finding and make sure that you all have that.
And the reason why I think that that's definitely something worth delving into is because we have so many teachers that are new to the profession this year. And if our teachers from last spring were already indicating this, perhaps we can look into, I know the question itself might have not been more specific, but I think that there were opportunities for elaboration, like in comment boxes. Maybe look for any trends so that we can learn from that to tweak our professional development offerings in the future.
And that's a great.
Yeah, yeah. On practices that promote equity. Like, is it that we're not doing that? Or is it that we need to improve the professional development we're offering? I just think that there's a lot to learn with that. There's a lot to learn, and there are lingering questions that I have with that. And what does many mean? Does many mean most? Those are my questions.
And then, you know, additional conversations and comments will come from focus groups and listening leaders, where they'll be able to dig deeper into getting more information to synthesize for us and give us more context to even the specific question as well.
And that was one of the strategies that Dr. Brown charged us with was as we developed the guide for the focus groups, was to base it off of the trends and some of these findings from the survey to do a little, dig a little bit deeper and to follow up there.
Yeah, so following on to what Keisha said, when I looked at that second bullet point and several others that started with most students' parents and staff felt, my question was, okay, so where did the students specifically align with his parents and staff? And where did the student's opinion diverge from the perception from the parents and staff? Because we know there's oftentimes, and Justin mentioned one of our COVID studies early on, where the student's perception was wildly different than what parents and staff expected.
And the dashboard, similar to the scorecard, the dashboard is designed with a multitude of filters. So you can look at a question, you can look at a category or result and filter it out to look at the overall results and then refine it by looking at where each group, you know, responded to the question. And then you can break it out between students, staff, and parents. And then even once you break it out that way, then you can look specifically at students who are economically disadvantaged or by a particular demographic group, et cetera. So there's a lot of interactivity there as well to do that. So much so that I can't find that question, but I'm going to keep looking as we proceed.
Dr. Brown, if I could just ask very quickly while David's doing that, the population that took the survey is there drilled down to that demographic as well? So just to know kind of who are the people putting together these responses to get these key findings?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that is, David, chime in if you need to, okay? When people took the survey, staff, students, and parents, they self-identify. So I identified as a student at Appleton Elementary School, as a parent of an Appleton student. So because it's anonymous, we assume that what they input was the rightful information.
We do have flags and tools and strategies built into the survey and into our analysis processes to look for suspicious results, repetitive results. You know, someone who maybe, you know, took the survey multiple and multiple times. And we try to provide the cleanest and most balanced when it comes to the final data that's included in that dashboard.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but I also meant like their nationality, male, female.
You said grade level earlier, like junior high, high school?
Right, right. I did mention that part in our discussion.
Yes, ma'am. You can filter by campus, grade level, student or parent, student. I mean, you can filter. When you get on the portal, you'll see the many ways you'll be able to access the data and the different filters you can use.
Okay. But the individuals that actually took part in the survey, do we have the demographic background of those? Okay, thank you.
And their school and everything else.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about this portion of our conversation? We're going to keep moving. David, back to you.
Okay, thanks. So we look at, again, this is where we go then, look externally rather than internally with the district to see what other districts are doing. And looking again at those equity frameworks, starting with our peer generator to look at districts that match with similar demographics, similar average household income, similar size, which is unique for Texas. You know, the districts are, you know, in a lot of cases, bigger. And then we look to see what information is out there. So I think we have it kind of broken out. So what we looked at with your districts, and again, these aren't going to be necessarily exact matches, but they're going to be districts that are close, that also have good information or a robust or well-developed equity framework already in place. So here, we're looking at Mesquite, Richardson, Austin, and Fort Worth within Texas. And then externally, you know, every state is different. Every regulatory environment is differently. Every requirement is going to be different from state to state. So the national peers are typically looking at what are some great ideas in districts that deal with similar student bodies, et cetera. But again, those Texas peers then provide a little bit more of a detail. So when you look at those frameworks, you know, what are they addressing? How do they address those? How do they roll those into their strategic plans? What are the priorities for the districts? So again, you see consistently, professional development is a key aspect of everyone's equity framework when it comes to working on these issues and ensuring that we are engaging all and that we are moving the district in the right direction. For some districts, in student services are also part of that. And sometimes that's because of where the desire for these equity frameworks comes from. Most districts, at least within the state of Texas, also have a component related to hiring and retention. So they have their HR offices and, you know, taking an active role. Again, as I mentioned before, and I think that is going to be continued in both your strategic planning and what Aaron and everyone's going to be doing moving forward is that communication and stakeholder engagement is so important. And then ensuring that the curriculum and instruction actually address those issues. And then, of course, there is a discipline aspect as well, making sure that the discipline incidents are addressed in similar ways, that consequences don't show extensive gaps. Or, you know, what are the reasons for those if they do? And the report goes into much more detail, provides a profile of each district based off of what information is out there. But here are some of the highlights. So for example, when you look at Mesquite, you know, they, the focus is on equity and leadership promotion among students. They do have a leadership empowerment team that kind of guides the efforts for the district. And then the focus area is where they're really looking at key performance indicators kind of fall under those categories of student leadership, professional learning, personnel and hiring, and communication. Richardson has 11 specific action items that they then link with key performance indicators we'll talk about next. Austin ISD focuses on addressing enrollment discrepancies among underserved groups. And one of the specific things that Austin does is they not only look at their student groups. So they might say, okay, you know, we want to look specifically at specific demographics. Students who are economically disadvantaged. But then they also define what equity means for those specific groups. So how can they specifically address that specific group's needs? And then again, focus areas include student well-being, employee well-being. You know, you all mentioned burnout. And certainly, as we emerge from the pandemic or continue dealing with the pandemic, that's obviously a critical aspect. Financial stewardship, making sure that, you know, you're operating the district in a way that supports and includes equity. And then Fort Worth ISD has 13 equity goals. So there's some consistency there, and the report kind of defines some specific things and provides more detail. So then key findings is the Texas peer districts have established equity frameworks in response generally to community concerns, while national peers integrate equity into their overall strategic planning process. So a particular state might require an equity plan. There are specific things that Texas requires and then more things given, you know, certain aspects of that accountability measure. But typically in Texas, it's about, you know, serving that community need and that expressive concern. Texas peers tend to have a multi-stakeholder committee and specific departments leading the design and implementation of their equity frameworks. And working with Aaron, you know, on all of these projects, we know that that's a direction that Arlington is taking, and we believe it's in good hands. He's been great, a great partner with us. Each peer district framework addresses professional development focused on issue-related equity. So it goes back to what you also found in your survey, that professional development is a key aspect of that. Whether that's a perception or whether that's a reality, it's something that has to be addressed. And then equity frameworks emphasize communication and stakeholder engagement. And districts plan to review existing policies and procedures to ensure alignment with equity goals, especially as they design and then implement and then measure their progress with their overall strategic plan. So our recommendations is to continue to engage stakeholders in the equity framework development process. You know, sharing out the reports, you know, having us help with the design of community engagement reports and pieces. Establish a common definition of equity through the district to guide the development of all that framework, and that's something that we're working on now. And we'll be doing more work here in the near future. And develop and report metrics to monitor district progress toward equity goals, which is that next report we've done, which is that external look at those key performance indicators as well. And we'll talk more about those here in just a couple of minutes.
So as we're looking at some of those benchmark comparisons with the frameworks that currently exist, while we're not necessarily going to be looking at data, what I would like for you all to do is take a couple of minutes and think about anything in these frameworks and these plans that really stands out as something that we might not necessarily have thought to review or thought to include, or something that really is illuminated in the processes, the focus areas that some of these districts have included. Perhaps also, we're kind of, when we're looking at that refute element in this reflection, thinking about, are there any particular areas addressed in some of these frameworks or in some of the more specific elements within the framework? within the frameworks that refutes something that you would have thought should or should not be included? And then lastly, confirming what, if any, of, of the elements that are included in some of these frameworks confirms what you already thought or assumed or identified as a need to include in, in your own. So similar to how we've done it for the, the last two turn and talks, to take a couple of minutes and, and think about those with, with another individual and then we'll come back and, and talk about those as a broader group.
I think we're ready to come back to our larger group. You guys will share out?
So my wonderful partner and I were discussing what, well, two, a couple of things that was interesting. The key findings, the finding, the second bullet, I'm sorry, the third bullet. Each peer district framework addresses professional development focused on issues related to equity versus the response that we got in our survey that said most of them think that we are not doing that. Also, the very first bullet, Texas peer districts have established equity frameworks in response to community concerns, very reactive versus national peers integrate the equity into their overall strategic planning process. So I cannot explain that, but that just sounds like a very deep coffee moment discussion.
Yes.
And thank you for embedding it into our strategic plan and not an outside separate thing that gets done and put on a shelf.
And I think probably most districts, even in Texas, do that. But the distinction we're making here is that kind of where the, the plan and the initiative originates from. So in, in particular states, there's a requirement every year and then part of the overall strategic plan as well for the district to specifically address equity, where that same kind of regulatory requirement isn't, isn't the same in Texas. So, but where you see this work being done, it's because of those concerns. Although everyone ends up working it into their strategic plans because it has to be really central and core as Dr. Brown presented, you know, early on in how it's kind of embedded in all those different aspects.
And then the final thing from our group was, under recommendations, the second bullet point, we think very, is very, very important. And that's establishing a common definition of equity. I mean, I don't know how we can get to that point of feeling that we as a district are equitable if your definition of equitable is different than your definition. So I really like that second bullet point recommendation. I'm sorry, my partner and I do.
I'm going to object being in data guy and say number three is most important. Give me the KPIs.
They're all number ones.
Is that a coincidence?
They're all ones. They're all ones. Well, as David mentioned, or maybe Emily, I'm not sure. The team will be helping with this multi-across-departmental, you know, focus on defining equity for Arlington. What does it mean? What does it look like? And so there will be a collective unit helping define that bar system. Where it's not just top down, here's the definition of what it looks like. They're going to come together and help us define that. Any other thoughts or questions or comments about this part? Okay, David, back to you.
All right, thanks. And I did find, so that recommendation from the survey was many teachers feel that the district does not provide enough quality professional development. It's about half of teachers agree that districts do provide, the district does provide enough. So it's 52% and 48%. So it's, it's many, it's not all or most, just to, just to clarify that. So, I mean, you know, and, and it's, it's good to be at that 50% point, but you want the majority of your teachers to feel that, that they've got that training and that support going in. And of course, some of that is going to be developed as you define. And then as you start to figure out what are your key performance indicators as you move forward. So good. All right. So, and we can go either way. This is fine. So the key findings here are that most Texas national peers monitor the progress of identified equity goals and initiatives using state-required indicators. So that's really kind of the, the, the foundational piece. But then most districts then have to do more fidelity. They have to go a little bit deeper into it because there's just a limitation to what those state reportings are. But, you know, it's common sense that you're aligning your key performance indicators with what is important and how the state is measuring you for accountability. Texas national peer districts use disaggregated data for any KPI to assess and improve educational equity. So really looking at specific student groups. And in addition to defining your definition of equity, you also have to have a very clear understanding of which groups and how you define those groups as you're addressing it and incorporating all. Most peers monitor equity KPIs through the strategic planning processes. And then all 12 peer districts that show up in this identify specific KPIs. And then if you'll go on to the next slide, that's where we kind of break it down. And again, it probably is hard to see on the screen, but there are some KPIs that are common to all the districts. And then you start to see how everybody then starts to refine them based off of their own priorities, their own goals related to their strategic plans. And I'm happy to talk about anything specific there. And again, like the other benchmarking report, we provide a lot more detail in the report as we look at those individual districts within the state and nationally.
So as we're thinking about the, the key performance indicators from a benchmark perspective, I'm sure that this is a conversation that's going to be ongoing throughout the entire process. And it's certainly one that lends itself to a pretty heavy time investment during the strategic planning process in general. But as we're thinking about KPIs in particular, and, and what I invite you to do in, in this particular turn and talk is think about what may make the most sense for Arlington ISD. And certainly this is not something that, that we can cover in its entirety in the span of, of three or four minutes. But as we're thinking about prioritization, especially informed by some of the practices and some of the promising practices that we're seeing among peer districts, I, I would invite for you all to think about, not necessarily the ones that, that always rise to the surface of, yes, we have to definitely need to look at graduation rate and those types of, those types of indicators. But in this turn and talk, we might want to think a little bit more about some of the indicators that need to be prioritized, perhaps that happened in the past, or ones that have been on our radar to include in, in this, in this iteration. So with that, three or four minutes again for this turn and talk, and then we can come back together as a broader group and, and discuss what some of those are that you, you had talked about for consideration.
Justice Will Banks has a question.
Yeah, I have a quick question that may not be directly relevant to us doing the exercise, but I'm just curious out of the districts, do you know about how many KPIs each district adopts to follow? What's the general ballpark?
That's a great question. While you're turning and talking, let me pull up the report and take a look because I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay.
And, and as we've done this strategic planning process with a lot of our districts, it can really vary. And there's a, I would see a loose correlation with the size of the district and the number of KPIs that we ultimately end up including in strategic plans. Oftentimes districts of, of your size will include a really robust list that's almost tiered to be able to say, what is something that we need to look at in the short term as a KPI? What is something that's an interim term and what's long-term that we're looking at over the course of five, five years or so? But oftentimes it ends up being quite a robust list of what are the top KPIs? Perhaps we're looking at anywhere from 10 to 20 as those, as those truly key performance indicators and then secondary or tertiary indicators to support that growth along the way towards the KPI. So it's a little bit of a twofold process for quite a few districts. In this particular report, as, as David is, is pulling that up to look at the specific number, it may vary across districts. But I, I hope that gives a little bit of insight into how others of your size in particular have often been engaging in the KPI development and refinement process.
Thank you, guys.
All right, wrap up your last thoughts. Who can name one more time in our larger group for this part of the conversation? And I think as Emily said, this won't be solved today or identified, but certainly a great launch for brainstorming. If I want to share what KPIs that resonated with them, they think might be important for us to consider in our strategic planning around.
David, Sarah, would you like to share?
I, I mean, I'd say absenteeism is always there. If someone's not there, they're not learning. So what barriers are we taking away? You know, like, listen, you look at some schools and I don't see the data. When it rains, we have a decrease in enrollment, right? Like we, we drop in that enrollment. And then also what I don't see possibly tracking, and it sounds to me him, but it's like tenure of teachers at certain schools, we having higher turnover rates at certain schools. Like that is a, you know, that, that can be another piece. The last piece of progression I talked about is, I don't want these to be separate KPIs. They need to all link up, everything together, you know? And, and all of this has to relate back to what it does for a student. It is a number one role where this has to come in.
And that's interesting because we were talking about teacher retention. We were looking at that one and they kind of go hand in hand.
But Sarah, I think it's also teacher retention to make sure we're retaining, or retain the right. That's what we were going to say, like, you know, just because someone stays doesn't mean they're at the right position or the right school, you know? We always hear sometimes people get moved and I would say nights at a time when they get moved. I talk to them, they're like, I'm so much happier with the location. Like it's crazy how that usually happens. And sometimes people get burned out. So are we looking at, I mean, kept someone there too long or they didn't play? I mean, that has to be evaluated in our decisions.
Kind of going out of the top ones that everyone looks at, especially against equity and how your different setups are performing. You know, here in Texas, we're a big part of our accountability is CCMR. So I'm always looking at things like, or I want to know what's, how are they performing on AP tests? Honors enrollment, how are avid students performing on those tests? And then how many are participating in our CTE center and certifications and how do those align? Are, is every, does everyone have equitable access to those programs? And then of course, the PSAT, SAT, ACT, those are heavy. But of the top ones that are at the top of the list, yeah, of course, those are no brainer.
It is interesting that teacher dynamic and, you know, we've scoped out some, some future work with Dr. Brown and Aaron, you know, related to teacher analysis. So looking, using data from the district to look at how teachers are dispersed across the district, you know, where, how long they've been at, maybe at a particular campus, what, what certifications they have, what degrees that they have, those types of things. But, but that type of, of research, you know, doesn't really stand alone. There's a lot of context and a lot of discussion that follows that because, you know, a teacher who has a PhD may not be the right teacher on a particular campus. Or, you know, you had talked earlier on about new teachers versus older teachers. And again, you know, you could have a brand new teacher who is so dynamic and engaging and creative that, you know, they'd really, you know, do a great job with a particular student group or with a, you know, on a particular issue. And so, but again, you know, our research is designed to, to provide you the data so that you can make really informed and, and quality decisions based off of that data.
Any other questions or comments about this portion? All right. Well, I want to say a special thank you to David and Emily for being here today. We're going to talk about next steps, but they've been great partners in this work. And you can see in the last few months, the level of research they've been able to share with us to help us inform our next steps. And so Aaron now is going to talk to, talk to us about our next steps in this work. And so I'm going to drive for you, Aaron. So are you ready?
President Bayes, I'll propose to the members of the board first. What a pleasure it is to be able to serve the community in this capacity. And thank you to Hanover for walking alongside us so far. And thank you to Dr. Brown and Dr. Gill for supporting me in this process. And so what we want to share is just some immediate next steps. And the good news is I only have three slides, but the first one has a lot of information on it. Hopefully you can see where you are. Dr. Brown and both our friends from Hanover shared that we were still in the middle of the data collection process. So what this slide shares with you is exactly where we are continuing that qualitative work. And so Dr. Brown mentioned Listening Leaders. So Listening Leaders is an initiative where we were able to activate a cohort of volunteer staff members that represent campuses and departments across the district to engage in one-on-one interviews with colleagues on the campus and department. And so what we did is we brought two different cohorts in that were going to act as listening leaders. We provided them an orientation, provided them a little bit of a coaching and a little bit of a script so that they could have a conversation in a safe environment, one-on-one with a fellow colleague to get back some of that qualitative data that we're looking for. I think it's important to share that the respondents are anonymous to increase that level of safety in the environment. And so we're, we are excited to review our results. The first cohort is going to be turning in the results by this Monday, the second cohort by next Friday. We'll take all the information that we gather and we will share it directly with Hanover. They will call the We're going to look at that equity survey, give an opportunity to digest the results, and give us some of their feedback from their perspective. It's important to know that this cohort as well represents AISD staff across the system, whether at the department level or the campus teaching and support level as well. And so, we're meeting with them tomorrow on the 22nd. We'll bring them back again a second time on November 5th, and we'll look, take a deep little dive into that equity framework and get their feedback on those pieces to help guide future decision-making that come along. And then the third one, which is one of those key recommendations that Emily, Emily surfaced, is defining equity in our district. And so, we'll begin that work. Hanover will actually join us for that task force meeting, and they're going to take the team, as well as Dr. Brown and I, through an equity definition workshop, begin to, to define what it means to us as a district, so that we can all operate, work, live, and breathe with a common language, and our stakeholders, both internal and external, can understand what we mean when we talk about equity as a system. And so, special thanks to those staff members that volunteered to be part of listening leaders and also part of the task force work as well. And so, we're also continuing with focus groups, and so, Hanover mentioned that they were able to activate three focus groups they did the last week. There was a focus group that represented campus teaching staff, there was a focus group that represented central office staff, and then a third cohort of task force members that represented campus leadership. Hanover conducted those focus groups in isolation with those cohorts specifically. Dr. Brown and I were not a part of that focus group. In doing so, we are activating some of our own internal focus groups as well with students. We also are willing to continue to have focus discussions with parents and parent groups, then also members of the community. And so, that's part of the ongoing data collection that we're still working on with Hanover, and all that will be added into the information that we've already received, you know, around the equity survey, the scorecard, the dashboard, and all, all of the information else there. And so, if we, just kind of going to look at that, we're going to continue to analyze the data that we have to help us inform our decision-making, and we continue through the strategic planning process and look at those really intentionally focused activities to help us achieve our goals. And so, the third slide is an easy one because it's just a question.
Question on determining the equity definition, so that's not, that it's going to be with the listening leaders and the task forces versus the approach.
Actually, the first step to defining the equity definition will be with the task force, that won't be the only input that our stakeholders have, but that's going to be a beginning of the work, so that we can build a framework for that definition and then allow for engagement to occur from all of our stakeholders so that they can have a voice in the definition.
Yeah, I. The reason I was asking is, we've been listening to a lot of equity things in councilary city schools, and one of the things that seemed to follow up in many of those presentations over the past few days was districts that have gone out there and, and started or made it down the road on this journey is, you know, some of the difficult tasks, really engaging that community, especially those that at the beginning had completely opposing views, and it just seems like that might be, that, that helped them in the process, and rather than having a preemptive process on the back end, it was somehow to put that in on the front end.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Your time and attention, Dr. Ross, back to you.
Just to kind of summarize the fact that, the context of where we're going, so this is the deep dive into our equity audit, our equity review, still more pieces to go. All of this will continue to align to our strategic plan and look forward to the next steps in the development of this work, the plan, and ultimately, the adoption of the strategic plan.
I'd like to just say thank you for all the work that's gone in. I know it's easy to come and make a presentation, but we don't see all the work that culminated to this one thing. So, first of all, we just thank you for moving forward after our resolution, immediately jumping on board, preparing, bringing in our survey information. The one thing, the couple of things that I really like and I really appreciate that you're doing is, as normal with AISD, bringing in feedback from our stakeholders in our community. I think that's something that AISD has consistently done, and I'm really proud of the fact that we're continuing to do it. One, because it gives a buy-in from everybody, and two, it makes us all hold ourselves accountable because we all had a part in doing it. So, really appreciate that fact. But thank you, thank you very much for the presentation this evening, we really appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you, Emily and David, for being here.
Thank you, Emily and David.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the document said it is now, is that nine or 10, Dr. Work?
President Bates, our speaker that registered is not here.
Okay, thank you. Is it nine?
Nine oh one.
So, it is nine oh one, and we are going to go into closed session pursuant to section 551.071 and 551.084, the Texas Government Code, in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. Thank you.